Good evening. The February 12th meeting of the Evanston City Council will come to order. Would the clerk please take the role?
There's been no. Councilmember Severdon. Councilmember Revel.
Here.
Councilmember Reed. Councilmember Herakaris.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Harris is not here today. Councilmember Wen.
Here.
Councilmember Newsma.
Here.
Mayor Bis.
Here.
And Councilmember Burns is online, but he's muted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have a quorum present in person, albeit just barely, and are therefore prepared to do our work for the evening. The first item on the agenda is my announcements and proclamations. I just want to announce to the public that administration and public works did not occur this evening for lack of a quorum, so that gives rise to two announcements. The first is that everything on the administration and public works then automatically populates to the city council consent agenda, where it will be considered this evening by council. Secondly, I do really want to extend sincere apology to those who were here for a public comment at, I believe, 5:00, if I have this right. I know it's been a very long time, and I'm sorry. The one thing I'll say is y'all will be the first to participate in public comment in a moment, and we will do everything we can to ensure that doesn't happen again. That concludes my announcements for the evening. The next item is the city manager's public announcements.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Clerk Mendoza, I just wanted to briefly introduce Cynthia Vargas. If Ms. Vargas could come up to the podium. Cynthia joins us most recently from the city of Highland Park, where she served as the Resiliency Division Manager. Before Highland Park, Ms. Vargas worked for about a decade in the Lake County State's Attorney's Office, where she served in multiple roles, including as the Communications Manager. Would you like to share a few words?
First and foremost, thanks to everyone for giving me the opportunity to work for the city of Evanston. I'm really privileged and honored to become a part of such an amazing progressive community. I look forward to really enhancing our communications division and working alongside all of our directors and staff members and making a difference in our community one life at a time. Thank you so much, everyone. Thank you for believing me, mayor and city manager and our council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
We're excited to have you on the team. The next item on our agenda is communications from the city clerk.
We've received email public comment from William Ward regarding issues in neighborhood, also a letter of support for ordinance 18-0-24 from Jill Moulds. And we also received a letter from Christina Escobar asking the council to reconsider the proposal for 1630 Orington. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This brings us to public comment for the evening. It's under 15 people have signed up, so everyone will be given the full three minutes. As I indicated, it will start with this blue sheet of paper.
Is this going to be added? Not public comment?
No, it is not at this time.
Because we were in the previous meeting, we didn't have others just going on.
So we'll begin again with a blue sheet of paper. So the first speaker will be Payson Wild, who will be followed by Ray Janisak, and then
Thank you very much. Jeff Forgash, by the way, had to leave. He's leaving town. So I'm here on behalf of the Evanston Sail and Paddle Association. I'm the president of the association, and I'm here on item A12. We're here to request the city council defer a final decision on the parks and recreation proposal for one rack per household until we and the Parks and Recreation Department have developed a comprehensive plan later in this year on the overall beach capacity allowing for greater equity, reduction of the waiting list, and enhanced revenue. ESBA members have made a significant effort to measure and plan space within the current Dumpster Street beach footprint. Our outline is attached in the email that we sent to you, but if you need a hard copy, I brought hard copies with me. On the equity issue, let's do it right. Let's do DE the right way instead of doing it hurriedly. The current Parks and Recreation proposal is only a piecemeal solution with little effect on the waiting list while disenfranchising current boaters who have paid fees, played by the rules, only to have those rules changed very instantly on them. We've agreed to develop a comprehensive plan with the city, and it will bolster significantly our overall revenue from the beach itself. Please give us a chance to truly make a difference by considering now a decision on the one rack, one per household proposal. We ask that you defer it, and we'll put it into the plan and work out with the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Ray Janisak, who will be followed by Jamie Egan, and then Mary Rosinski.
Evening, everyone. I agree with the ESBA about deciding about one rack per household at the end of the summer. This was a sudden change in a 30- or 40-year policy.
Could you please move the microphone down so that... Perfect. Thank you so much.
This was a sudden change in a 30- or 40-year policy of whatever number of racks per household. It was changed suddenly in December of 2023 as a proposal. The proposal was at a meeting on December 21st, right during Christmas, and the agenda said discussion of Dumpster Street Launch Facility waiting list. No mention of a proposed change in policy, regardless of how many racks per household. And all those who have racks that waited patiently on the waiting list in order to get a rack in the first place. The idea of losing one slip means that a household that has two slips means that they have to double stack their boats. And according to Parks and Recreation, that's just a piece of cake. That's easy. Well, I went down to the beach this weekend, and the kayak tree is six feet high, which means it's the top of my finger, right up there. That's how tall it is. So there are a lot of people who cannot just suddenly put two kayaks up on a rack when they're 60 pounds and about 12 to 14 feet wide in length. It actually, for a person in their 30s or 40s, if they're about six feet tall, they can probably do it fairly easily. But for anybody else who of us is 5'5", 5'4", 5'6", six feet high is pretty high to stack two kayaks. For them, it'll take measuring and plotting and logistics in order to see how they can accomplish this. But it's impossible to do it right now because all the boats are in storage. You can't measure your kayak. You can't measure the racks and see how it would even be possible. I think that the timing of this is very poor. There are ideas for shrinking the waiting list, including verifying they want to be on the waiting list, and also the fact that Womete charges like $25 to be on the waiting list. So if you really want to be on it, okay, fine. That's a great thing, and we've all been there. There's also a diagram by ESBA about the number of slips. They could add 204 slips without changing the footprint, without taking any beach area, without taking any other space from anyone else, but just using the space that's already been allocated for that purpose. It would seem that Parks and Rec could implement some of these ideas and revisit the number of racks per household in the fall with new current information. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Jamie Egan, who will be followed by Mary Rosinski, and then Vivian Killabrew.
Good evening. My name is Jamie Egan. I'm here on behalf of opposing A12. I think it's part of a... There was a slogan when I was in the State's Attorney's Office, "To do the right thing." And when I found out about the beach and the rack of the kayaks, I immediately got on a list. Took me eight years. I got my spot. I found out I wanted to have my wife with me, so I put myself on the list again. Took about six years. I made the list. And because of my shoulder, I've had a shoulder reconstruction. I took several times to trade places so they could get down low enough that I could use the racks that are in a lower level. I've obeyed all the rules that they've set forth, and now I think it should be... I'm doing the right thing, so I think I should still be able to keep my racks. And I agree with everything that was in Mr. Wild's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Mary Rosinski, who will be followed by Vivian Killabrew, and then Ray Friedman.
Hi. I have a couple of things I wanted to just mention in SP3. I wish we would quit having so many special orders of business. I think it sort of bypasses any sort of public discussion, question answering, and things like that. I don't know. In this last couple of years, there's been more than I think we've ever seen in the 30 years I've been here. I'm here to speak about SP3 and that intergovernment agreement between Womete. I think it's a great idea for Womete. I envy the Womete residents that they're getting this. What we don't have for the neighborhood immediately south of Isabella is any traffic plan that makes any sense. And I personally, because I live right there, this is a NIMBY thing for me, I'm concerned about traffic and fire safety and police safety when all the traffic jams... We've gone through the football season, when everyone's coming or going, and for about a half hour, there is no movement at all. And so I think that... I mean, there's little movement, but if you have... It's on both sides of the street, so if you have a fire, and it's at that time, you can lose a house in that moment. You know, that five minutes that it takes to move all the traffic off of the double park. So I really think that Evanston residents deserve a good plan, a good discussion, and I'd like to have a good community open town hall for people who are concerned that, you know, the thousands of households that are living right there. Second of all, as far as the pocket community, I do support pocket communities. I'm a little bit surprised that this was passed right through at PND. The reason being is that I think we can do better. And even Mr. Wallach had said at the previous meeting that he thought two-for-two, two people households or two bedrooms, this should be a minimum of 700 square feet. And I would have to agree with that. You know, at 633 a square foot for this, your major expenses in building are your inner first 100, 200 square feet in your bedroom... Not your bedroom, but your kitchen and your bathrooms and the plumbing and the hookup. To add another 100 square feet for a little bit more living room to make it really lovable for two people, maybe a single parent, whatever, because you have two schools right there, who are you targeting? And I just want you really to think about that. And also, it's a little bit disconcerting that we're in the middle of this comprehensive plan, which are our planning goals for our community, and we just sort of created this whole different zone agreement. We have to quit being so haphazard. Not that I disagree with it. I personally would have, just like I say, liked bigger units.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Vivian Killabrew, who will be followed by Ray Friedman, and then Ken Prosky. I believe Ms. Killabrew left, in which case the next speaker will be Ray Friedman, followed by Ken Prosky, and then Meg Welch.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like... My first question is on A1 today on bills. You've got payroll, and then you have bills. It looks like bills are being paid for last year January and this year January. That was for last month. This month, you're paying, looks like, for bills for last year February and this year February, about $3 million for each. I was wondering about that. I see on items A3, 1.7 million for an A4, 2.3 million are both using general obligation bonds, for a total of $4 million. I have spoken before about using general obligation bonds, and it's not a good idea. Our tax dollars are at work here in Evanston, and you've hired a consultant to work on Envision 2045 and pay that consultant $750,000. It's great to have that envisioned for 2045. I'd like to know what our vision is for 2025. One of our goals from 2018, goals list, was to stabilize city finances. What happened to that? Also, last council meeting, you voted to buy 430 Asbury for 2.6 million and move out of City Hall to rent out office space at 909 Davis for 2.5 million per year and 5.9 million to retrofit it, and sign a 15-year lease. Doesn't the city of Evanston own any property that they could use for City Hall, like Robert Crown or Harley Clark? Why do we need to buy more property, and why do we need to rent anything? You are spending, proposing, or have already signed a lease for 15 years. That's $43 million at 909 Davis to rent property. City Evanston is in the business to rent property without any discussion or input from residents. That's an insult. I'm sorry. What happened to transparency and accountability that Mayor Bis spoke about after you were elected? We're spending 8 to 10 million on a new animal shelter, 50 million on Robert Crown, and still spending all the time on Robert Crown, 8 million on James Park lawsuit, which we lost, 7 million on Fountain Square that doesn't work. Millions of tax dollars being given away to businesses. I don't understand for what purpose or what the advantage is to Evanston taxpayers. Also, we've settled three lawsuits this year in a month and a half. Our budget has gone up in the last three years by about 150 million, and we received 44 million ARPA funds. We have 900 employees.
Thank you very much.
And creating new TIFs.
Thank you very much.
We need to relook at the finances.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Ken Prosky, who will be followed by Meg Welch.
Hello. For once here, not to talk about Ryan Field. I am interested in talking about A12, the boat rack policy that's been proposed by the departments and rec... I agree with most of the items that are there. I think we all do. All the people that have spoken before me said that we want to be ethical in the approach. We want people coming to the beach using the racks. We proposed... I'm a member of the Evanston Sail and Kayak Association too. We proposed a five-step plan that we think is far more effective, will accomplish a lot more. We've actually been out there and taken measurements, and in the same footprint, we could almost double the number of kayak racks that are there now and cut the waiting list way down. We also believe there are a lot of people on the waiting list now that really, we're not sure how honestly they're telling us they want to be, and we should do what Womete is doing, which is charge a small fee, a nominal fee, to stay on that waiting list and see what we get at the end of the season. We do agree with the proposal that people who don't show up and take their space and use it by June 15th should forfeit that space. That would free up... There are a bunch of people that rent a space year after year and never show up. That makes sense to us. What doesn't make sense is to limit the people that have two racks to one, who've put in all of the time, followed the rules, been on the waiting list for years. And then in the middle of the winter, when we can't even determine whether or not we can comply with this, we can't measure to see if our boats can be double stacked, we're stuck, and we're in a bad position of not being able to comply with this. So we have a five-point plan that I believe you all were sent earlier from Mr. Wild that we think will accomplish a lot of the goals that the departments wants to accomplish in a more equitable, fair way and generate revenue for the city, $65,000, $70,000. We ask you to take that into consideration. It's okay with us to approve the plan, except for the one rack per household, which we recommend you defer until after these other pieces of our recommendation are considered and put in place. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Meg Welch.
Good evening. I'm here to ask you if you're really confident that the city got the best deal in the 909 Davis lease. A 15-year lease is very unusual, according to real estate professionals. The city is very low-risk tenant. We're not going to go out of business. The building sold, in case you didn't know, in 2023 for 28 million. After seven years for us to get out of this lease, we're going to have to pay 8.8 million. So that's like a third of the value of the building as of 2023. That seems super, super high. Also, it's... What were the alternatives? We were told this is the best deal the city could get. It would make residents feel a lot better. If we were presented with, well, what were the worst alternatives? Were we only offered 20-year leases? Were we offered leases with higher rent than 2.5 million a month? What were the alternatives? And there's nothing wrong with the city council asking city staff. It's not accusatory. It's just show your work. And it's nice for the residents to be confident that everything's been covered. And also, you know, particularly when there's a windfall, and it's going to be kind of a windfall for the owners of 909. They have a guaranteed tenant for 15 years. We're going to add to the value of their building. You know, and obviously, you know, no one thinks that the decision was driven by that, but especially when, you know, a private party especially benefits. It really is, you know, it's part of the checks and balances. Hopefully, it's my understanding, with the city and the city council, the city staff do their research, bring it forward, but then you all ask questions and do a little digging. And that's not hostile to our city staff. That's not... That's just the checks and balances. We elected you because we thought you were people who would do that, and we consider that your responsibility. And then also, you know, it does raise concerns. A 15-year lease, and we haven't even decided theoretically if we're moving out of this building permanently, but it sort of seems like, you know, it'd be a little odd to have a 15-year lease and then move out. So it also sort of signals that, to some residents, that gee, maybe the decision has already been made, and, you know, it's Kabuki Theater, whether or not we're really, you know, the public debate. Has it already been decided? And then also, of course, bringing it as a special order of business. You know, it's Mayor Bis. It just makes us want to know, why were you so keen on having this pass? We didn't really get much consideration of it. The input, all the options weren't laid out. So if you can reconsider, I would really encourage you to do so.
Thank you very much. This concludes the public comment from individuals who signed up on a physical sheet of paper.
Sir, Mayor Bis signed up on a raw sheet? I signed up on a piece of paper and tried to speak earlier tonight. May I speak? I'll be short.
So anyone who wants to speak to the clerk while we're moving forward is welcome to do so, and we can get these issues worked out. At this time, I'm going to continue on the path that I laid out in the beginning of the public comment section. Moving on to those who signed up online to speak in person.
Okay. But Mayor Bis, if I... I mean, this gentleman really did sign up on the PND sheet, meaning, but he meant to sign up on AMPW. So he's been here a long time.
So again, you're free to speak to the clerk, and we can work things out, but I'm not going to negotiate on the mic. You're free to speak to the clerk, and we can work things out, and that's the mechanism by which you can seek an opportunity to be added to the list.
I don't understand what you're saying. Are you suggesting that they get on the list for tonight?
I'm suggesting that they speak to the clerk and seek relief in a mechanism that does not involve negotiating on a mic in front of the public. So continuing down our path as advertised, those who signed up online to speak in person are Lisa Delantoni, followed by Olin Wilson Thomas.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for your service. I appreciate all you do. I am here to talk about Parks and Rec's recommendation to make edits to beach access that include limits of one slip per household, 50 additional dollars per craft, and all vessels needing to be on the beach by June 15th. I think they made that recommendation. Council pushed it back. I went to the Parks and Rec meeting, heard all the public comment, and I want first to state that equity takes sacrifice. So that's a thing that we all know. We all have a thing. More people want it. Somebody has to sacrifice something to share it. The city has done a great job of making the lakefront more accessible, and I would like for you to continue to doing that. I moved here 12 years ago with a nine-year-old and a five-year-old. We fell in love with the lakefront. We saved our money all fall. We bought a used paddleboard at Play It Again Sports, and we went to go to the beach the next summer, only to get on a waiting list for six years. No big deal. We carried our paddleboard in our Sanford and Son vehicle up and down the street all summer long for a decade. My children no longer live here, so I'm sort of advocating for beach access for my grandchildren, which I might have in this community. I'm on the fence about that. But what I need is for people to understand that the 322 people waiting to put their paddleboard on the beach aren't people who've invested in a triple-hull sailboat situation. There are young families who are marketed a fun and accessible beachfront that could maybe be affordable, less so than going to Camp Echo, and they're put on a waiting list for upwards of a decade to use a paddleboard on the beach, and maybe they don't have a car to bring it back and forth. So I'm saying you have to really look at who's using the beach. I know some people have made the case that they can't double stack their kayak because maybe they're too short, or there was a woman at Parks and Rec who made the case that she was too old to lift her kayak back and forth. But there's a lot of young families that are blocked from access to the beach because we do not open up every single year. All of the passes are new. We also allegedly have people who have a boat pass that maybe Grandma Mary passed down to them four generations ago, and they don't live in Evanston anymore. We don't fact-check or ask for IDs all the time when a pass is renewed. If you get a new pass, a parking pass, you have to show your ID. But if you are renewing a boat pass that you've had for 27 years, you don't have to show your ID. So I'd also love to, and that's what one of the Parks and Rec people recommended at the last meeting, show IDs for every single person who has a pass. Charge them more if they live in a different community, but prioritize the people who live here. And please understand that not everybody who's coming to the beach are older sailboat humans. There's lots of young families with little kids, and the only thing they can afford is going to the beach in the summer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is Olin Wilson Thomas still here? All right. So that concludes the folks who signed up online to speak in person. So we now return to the two planning and development signups who were not called on earlier. What I have bought myself in exchange for fully equitable adherence to the rules is a tricky translation, a tricky pronunciation problem. Gianmatthias Shelbert, who will be followed by Mike Colhane.
Thank you, Mayor Bis. And it's Gianmatthias Shelbert. That was pretty good, actually.
Apologize.
No, okay. It's okay. So first of all, thank you for listening to me again. I live at 1905 Grant Street, two doors away from the Grant Street project. And to say I was here earlier, I'm extremely disappointed in each and every older person that was on this meeting who approved this project, because you are only listening to half-truths and developers, and you're not listening to the community, and you're also, most importantly, not listening to the data. This is being talked to you as affordable housing. This is not affordable housing. It's like buying a 1/16th a slice of pizza at $20. The price per square foot of these places... You can look at me, older person. You don't look over there. You can look at me, because this project is extremely expensive. It does not help anybody who's trying to get into the real estate market of Evanston. There are tons of condos, under $185,000, 153 of them sold here in Evanston. They are a dime a dozen. This project is going to be, in my humble opinion, a disaster, and the city is not doing your due diligence by skirting the process of a PD, and that's what it should be. And you guys ignored the land use commission completely. They had a unanimous decision, five to zero, to say, hey, this needs to be relooked at, and you guys ignored it. Why? What is it that you think is so important that this thing must get done when the price point is over twice that of the average sale of a single-family home or an attached unit property? I know this because I've been in the mortgage industry since 1993. I know what I'm talking about. Additionally, he's all over the map with his declarations of putting up solar panels and adjusting things, and, hey, the garbage is the garbage is the garbage. The guy has put together a half-piece. The guy has put together a half-piece, you know, he said, oh, we'll use 24, 36 garbage units, or we'll put in bins. I don't know, you tell me. The guy doesn't know what he's talking about, and it's just a snow job. And for whatever reason, you guys took it without any, any critical analysis or allowing the process to go. You had 110 signatures from the neighborhood that said, please stop. Take a moment and look at it. But yet, you didn't. You want to listen to a developer as if they get carte blanche, and someone who's been living in the, in the, in the community for over 50 years? Nothing. Echo chamber. Why? What is it that makes this thing so special? I'm ashamed. And Eleanor, especially you. You represent us, and there was over 115 signatures, and you ignored all of them. And then you want to sit here and pretend you listened to us? No, you didn't. If you did, you would have been an unequivocal no and supported Kelly in saying, follow the PD process and not a special use permit. Please, please, please reconsider.
The next speaker is Mike Colhane.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm here to speak about the Dempsey Street Beach and the concept of pain. I don't think that some people looked at the issue with the right perspective. So there was a proposal from Park that said something, they could do something and get 49 more people on the beach. And there's a long waiting list. And now there's a proposal that we can get over 200 people more on the beach with a different way of thinking and looking at the problem. So don't look at this as a little pie where we have to fight for pieces. Figure out how to expand the pie so that more people can share in the fun. Thank you very much for letting me.
Thank you very much. This concludes this evening's in-person portion of public comment. We now move to the Zoom portion of public comment, which will begin with John Kennedy, followed by Sebastian Nalls, and then Sue Lobach.
Hello? Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, great. Okay. I'm John Kennedy from the Third Ward, and I'd like to speak on the potential lease of 909 Davis. After attending last January 22nd meeting and watching the video several times, the general consensus of the council seemed to be as follows. One, the move to an office building is a temporary move while the city sorts out the options to either build a new civic center or rehab the existing. Two, six of you voiced a preference for a shorter lease in the meeting, presumably because a long 15-year lease does not make sense whether we build new or rehab existing. Three, you directed the city manager to negotiate for a shorter lease. Now, I'm sure all of you have been in a negotiation. For a negotiation of work, both parties must want the end result, in this case, a signed lease. But for any real negotiation to take place, the only way to move the needle is for, is for both sides to have a potential to walk away. Now imagine you are the owners of 909 Davis. The city council has passed an ordinance directing the city manager to execute a 15-year lease. But then the city manager comes back and asks for a shorter lease. Why would you, as the owner, negotiate a shorter-term lease when a 15-year lease increases the value of your building by millions of dollars? And the ultimate decision-maker, you, the council, has put into law that the 15-year lease would be acceptable. Would any of you, as owners of the office building, agree to a shorter lease, which would cost you millions in the value of the building? Sure enough, when I inquired at a meeting with city staff on the 30th, if they asked for a shorter lease, they said, oh, we did ask, but the owners said no. The only way to get the owners of 909 to enter into a meaningful negotiation is to have an alternative. The good news is that I understand that there is another viable building downtown that is willing to do a shorter lease, perhaps as short as three to five years. Furthermore, the building may not require anywhere near the 5.9 million in build-out that is planned for 909. What is at stake here is perhaps $30 to $40 million in possible savings by going to a shorter lease. But the only way to save money for the residents is for the council to direct staff to explore these alternative locations and negotiate a shorter lease. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Sebastian Nalls, who will be followed by Sue Lobach.
Good evening, city council. Mistakenly signed up for this instead of, instead of planning and development. But I'd just like to thank Planning and Development for sending P3 back to Land Use Commission. It didn't really make sense to put two thrift stores right next to each other, especially since one has been in the community for so long and is a black-owned, women-owned business. So thank you for doing that. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Sue Lobach. We are not hearing you. Hold on one moment. So there should be requests coming through to unmute on your phone? All right, I guess maybe you're supposed to do star six. Is that a thing that we do? I don't know. I think we might, are you, can you speak, speak now, Ms. Lobach?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You're a little faint, so I think if you could speak up, that might help.
Okay. Is this better?
Yes, it is.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks, sorry about that. I could not get in on PND either. So I'm speaking at a meeting I did not intend to speak at. So apologies. I want to thank the PND committee for moving forward with PS1 and 2. I really appreciated what the council members said, countering a lot of the negative things that were said, and really talking about how this is an innovative and very special development. The things that we wanted to comment are, are that it adds to the variety of housing types, which is something that's really desperately needed in Evanston. And this development does that. It increases the number of housing units available, which is urgent in the housing shortage that we have. This development does that. Although this development does not provide affordable housing for most of the people that come to Connections for the Homeless, which I didn't state at the beginning because I was twister, I work there. This is a more affordable alternative than many of the housing that's available, the units. And even though it may be more expensive per square foot. And I would say that given any location, the smaller the building, the more expensive it's going to be per square foot. So I don't think there's anything outrageous about that. While we need family housing, we have just as great a need for smaller one- and two-bedroom units. And just because these are not big houses, it does not mean that the people who live in them won't care about the community, the connections. We know many, many renters, people who grew up in rental units in Evanston, who care a great deal. And we expect that the people who live in these new units will be very, very excited to be part of the community. This project has gone through land use, and many of the concerns that caused the Land Use Commission to vote against it have been addressed in a careful and non-reckless manner. Hockin neighborhoods are a trend that really should be supported through our zoning code. And requiring such developments to go through a planned development process will really accomplish very little new other than increasing the development costs, both for the developer and for the city itself because of the process they need to go through. Joining forces for affordable housing supports this development, and the tax amendment without revision to send this project through a PND process. We really believe that approving this will be acting not just with due diligence, but also with foresight and efficiency. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment for the evening and brings us to special orders of business. Does anyone have a motion relative to item SP1?
Mr. Chair, I will move item SP1, which is to discuss and accept and place on file the One Howard Street Economic Recovery Plan.
Councilmember Newsma moves that city council adopt and place on file the One Howard Street Economic Recovery Plan. Councilmember Wynn seconds. I think Mr. Zalmazak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Clerk Mendoza, members of the council. Good evening, everybody. I'm Paul Zalmazak, I'm the Economic Development Manager. Tonight, we have Muse Community Design, an urban design firm out of Chicago, presenting the One Howard Plan. It will be a very brief presentation. I've committed to that, and I've seen the slides. My colleague Katie Bowden is also available online for questions afterwards. Thank you.
Good evening. Thanks so much for having us. My name's Courtney Kishima. I'm the founding principal of Muse Community Design and Urban Planning and Public Engagement Firm. We are based in Chicago. Very excited to present the One Howard Street Economic Recovery Plan. This was funded through a State of Illinois RISE grant, which the program is for kind of COVID recovery in business districts. And between the City of Evanston and the Rogers Park Business Alliance, they really took advantage of an opportunity to tackle the small stuff and create a big vision for Howard Street. There was unprecedented coordination between the two sides of the street. And we were appreciative of the opportunity to think big because Howard Street, there's some really interesting progress, but a lot more to go. So you'll see here some of our inspiration. The study area was from Sheridan to Asbury. And, next slide? Oh, no. Oh, there we go. Just a delay. Wanted to share some of the biggest ideas that we're pretty excited about. So the first one is at Asbury and Howard, and it's sort of enhancing the gateway here, letting people know they're in a special place. The second one is called Callan Plaza. So making the most of the exciting stuff happening in this part of Howard Street and building off of your own successes, even smores, right, this weekend? So this could be a temporary space that could be programmed and, as appropriate, become permanent. The third one is at Howard and Chicago. You know, when you think about the distance from the L to all of the things people want to get to further west, it's not the distance, it's the quality of that walk. So we've made some recommendations on how to make it a little more comfortable and safer to encourage people to take the, take the L. The boldest is what we're calling Palina Plaza. So it's City of Evanston across the street where you see One Howard Street. This side is Chicago, but we've talked with CTAC dot, all the partners, to reimagine this bus turnaround area for special events, programming, markets of all sorts. So hope you have a chance to read through it, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there questions? Seeing none, thank you for the very informative presentation.
Thank you.
Would the, oh, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Brevell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadakatis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Wynn?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and the plan is adopted and placed on file. This brings us to item SP2. Is there a motion relative to item SP2? I will move approve, move for discussion in Vision Evanston 2045 presentation. Councilmember Hadakatis moves that we discuss the Envision Evanston 2045. Councilmember Wynn seconds. Ms. Williams.
Good evening, Mayor Bis, Clerk Mendoza, members of the city council. My name is Liz Williams. I'm the planning manager from the City of Evanston. I'd also like to recognize John Brook from HDR Architecture is here this evening, in addition to his colleagues online. So if there are any questions, they can answer them. So, next slide, thank you. Next slide. So what is Envision Evanston 2045? This is a once-in-a-generational opportunity to produce two documents, a comprehensive plan, which is the shared vision for the future of Evanston, and a zoning code, which is the primary implementation tool. Next slide. So why is this important? We use, and you see on the screen here, some pretty big terms like land use and zoning. And this process will focus on these big topic areas that contribute to essentially the quality of life and an opportunity to build around health, happiness, and prosperity. So, next slide. So if you care, I guess, about how our roads, sidewalk, trails connect and allow us to get around how housing is attainable and accessible to all residents, how we ensure jobs, business opportunities for all Evanstonians, and how we repair historical harms around land development, wealth building, and access to resources, this process is for you. So why now? As you can see, I'm certain if we all think back to where we were in 1993, it's probably a very different image that you think about than what you see in front of you today. So, you know, we, we talk a lot about context here. So gas in 1993 was $1.07 a gallon, just to give you a little, little sense of time there. And along those lines, a lot will change over the next 20 years. So this is our opportunity to chart our path to 2045 together. So over the next year, this iterative process will build upon recent planning, such as Evanston Thrives, the E Plan, our Climate Action and Resiliency Plan, and Preserve 2040, just to name a few. And this will allow us to understand lived experiences, develop a vision for Evanston in 2045, identify the goals and strategies necessary to pursue this vision, refine a draft code and plan prior to the Land Use Commission and City Council ultimately considering the final product. This is intended to go beyond the traditional approach to community engagement, which typically includes, you know, the city calling a meeting and asking residents to show up. Instead, we are identifying activities that already are happening in neighborhoods and locations where community members typically go. And we are partnering with these groups, events, and locations to seek input. We also have opportunities for people who do not attend formally organized meetings, and they can get involved online or in person across the community. So no process is perfect. And this is why we are proactively designing check-ins throughout the process and making sure that we're evaluating who has been involved and who is not. And we will make adjustments as necessary to ensure that we're hearing from a broad cross-section, both geographically and demographically. So wrapping up, we recognize that ultimately, both documents will come to fruition throughout this process. And if you could just, next slide? Next slide? Next slide? The role of the city council, I think, is really important here. You know, throughout this process, we will be looking to you as ambassadors to help shepherd this through. As individual residents of Evanston, we're also hoping that you'll participate in the opportunities to engage and share your vision. And we'll also be coming back monthly to provide updates to you in terms of where we are in the process. And we'd really like to hear from you, feedback. What are you hearing from your constituents? What are we missing? Who else do we need to be talking to? That's really important for us to check in regularly so that once this comes back before the city council ultimately, you'll have an understanding of where we've gone across the last year. So last slide. So last slide. I'm going to push this back a little bit on you, if you don't mind entertaining me for a minute. And I'm going to ask if you can just say, if you could achieve just one thing throughout this project, what would you want it to be? So this is important for us as we embark in this process, just hearing from you as elected officials.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments or answers to the prompt from the council?
I will answer in one word.
Is? Councilmember Nusma.
If this is a word holisticness.
Might be a new one, but.
Councilmember Hadakatis.
I will say parking maximums.
That's two words.
She said one thing, not one word. Councilmember Nguyen?
Community participation.
Councilmembers, Revell followed by Saffredin.
Community enthusiasm.
Councilmember Saffredin.
Yeah, thanks. Listen to exactly what you asked for, but it's a question. How are we going to make sure that we're emphasizing appropriately the visions of people who actually live in Evanston and pay taxes in Evanston, as opposed to outside groups or organizations or individuals who like to use Evanston as their policy plaything? Is there going to be a way to weed out some of the input from actors who don't actually live in Evanston?
Yeah, I'm going to take the mic here. That's your job. Right? Our job as elected officials is to weigh the input, understand where it comes from, and contextualize it. I would, I would think we're not doing our job if we don't take that on. And I think we're asking staff to do something that they're both ill-equipped for and also maybe not the right venue for, if we're putting that on them.
Well, I guess that's the question. You know, as you're having meetings throughout the community and getting input from people, is there a way to, like, screen and confirm that people actually live in Evanston? Or are we going to just take input and aggregate it and present it? And that's a question I'm asking.
Yeah. I'm happy to respond to that. So this process will include a combination of both, you know, what I would call qualitative storytelling aspects and more quantitative aspects. And part of the approach will be to collect, you know, demographic information in terms of who the information that we are receiving is coming from. So that will allow decision makers, as yourself, to evaluate that information and how people have represented themselves in terms of when they're responding to those questions, you know, who they're representing as part of their perspectives.
Okay, so we're not, we're going to take them at their word. We're not verifying it. We're not asking for ID or tax bills or anything to have input on this?
No, I don't think that was part of our screening process, no.
Okay.
Any further comments from council? Council, so we, I think no one is requesting to speak for a first time, so we'll go back to second crack. Everyone has essentially five minutes left. We'll go back to Councilmember Hadakatis at this time, followed by Nusma.
So my question was, when is the next event? I know we had a kickoff event and complying with OMA, there's only three spots for council members. Would very much like to take part in the next one. When is that happening?
So we're currently solidifying the schedule for the rest of Phase One, so that focus on lived experiences. I would anticipate more outreach around upcoming events coming in the next two weeks, but they'll tentatively be around the first of, or the end of this month, first of March.
And I will also volunteer. I think it'd be a good idea to have a Spanish language session. I would definitely volunteer to get the word out, recruit community members to show up, so.
Awesome, yes, that is in the works.
Councilmember Nusma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Liz, I'll share with you something we've already talked about, but I just want to go on record in public. With regards to the community engagement, and I think you were spot on when you said this has to be more than just holding a meeting and taking input from whoever shows up. And we, for the most part, have a pretty good idea of who's going to show up. We have a pretty good idea of what they're already going to say. Those venues in that should, I'm not saying don't do those. We need to have those meetings and invite those people because we do need to hear what those people have to say. But there are so many people who live in town that don't show up to meetings because they don't know or they don't know that they should care. And it's an ongoing challenge in all the work we do as council members who are elected to represent everyone in our ward to make sure we're hearing from everyone in our ward. So we need to be very intentionally reaching out to people and dragging them very politely and respectfully and in a friendly manner into the conversation. And despite those best efforts, we're still going to end up missing people, which is sad, but inevitably true. I would like to be able to say, when this is all over, that we have done everything we possibly could to bring people into the conversation. And I think one of the mechanisms for reaching out or bringing in, we can look to the participatory budgeting infrastructure. And I'm not speaking about the financial implications of participatory budgeting, but they did a really good job of community organizing and bringing people into the conversation. So I would like to, you know, take advantage of those lessons and that infrastructure, which is, at this point, not too rusty. And it's going to be a huge challenge, if we look at our timeline, to get this done in the next six weeks. That's a lot. So I am concerned that we allow ourselves enough time to get all this input upfront and then on an ongoing basis as well.
Yeah, and I would say that it's definitely beyond six weeks. You know, we're looking at engagement spanning until likely November before this, you know, really starts the formal hearing process of the Land Use Commission and City Council. So with every step along the way, this will be a snowball approach where, again, we want to make sure that we're meeting people where they are, but also making sure we're not missing anyone. So we'll be checking back in on that frequently and making pivots throughout the process to address that.
Thank you.
So don't let myself off the hook. So my answer to your question is walkable density. And I just, as one of the lucky three who was at the meeting last week, I want to, in the interest, frankly, of self-accountability, I will name into this microphone that less than two hours before the start of the meeting, I had a conversation with a member of city staff, and I was like, I am very nervous. I think this is a great thing, and people will not come. And I was totally proven wrong. It was a terrific event. It was an event that was, I thought, pretty special and unlike other events that we've done in this building since I've been mayor. I think that's a tribute to the seriousness with which our team took the responsibility of reaching out beyond the kind of usual channels. And I think it worked, not only from the standpoint of literally how many beating hearts were in the room. By the way, the answer to that, that's an important question. The answer was awesome. But also kind of what was the feeling in the room? And what there was, was a lot of different people who don't necessarily always get a chance to talk to each other, strategizing together, bouncing ideas off of each other, thinking about what kind of community we want to live in. So I say that with every recognition that I'm sure staff shares, that this is one success among what will have to be many successes for us to get the level and breadth of input we need. But it was, I think, first of all, just a testament to the work y'all are doing, a testament to the approach and seriousness that you bring to it. And it was a great, a great start for an important process. Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you. I just, I have to mention, folks were invited to the meeting both in person and online. And just so this gets remedied, because it is so important. I was on there, and I heard your speech, Daniel, heard one other speech, and then we were cut out of the process. We were put in breakout rooms or anything. So, you know, I don't think that was, so we really need to remedy that. If we're going to invite people to attend online, then they should be participants. Thank you.
That concludes the discussion on SP two. Thank you again. Is there a motion?
Sorry, y'all, I had my hand up.
Oh, I apologize, Councilmember. Go ahead, Councilmember.
I just put it up, so. Okay, thank you. I, yeah, love, absolutely love and appreciate the commitment to going where people are. Unlike the kickoff event for this, I've gone to other events that weren't as successful. And even when they are, again, you, you, you know, we tend to see some of the same people at those events. And I think for, you know, 15, 20-year plans such as this, it's important that we hear from, from some of the regulars, but also from people who have never spoke at Public Common or attended a meeting. And I think the only way to do that is to go where they are and including maybe even some door-to-door outreach where needed. So I 100% support that and appreciate that we're looking at doing that. Along those same lines, I wonder if we have any outreach goals. I may have missed that. But if you could speak to what our goals are. I feel like when there are clear targets, we're more likely to achieve them. So that's my first question.
Yeah, I appreciate that question, and I'll make a commitment to come back at our next meeting in March when we do an update to provide some more clarity on those metrics because they are still being solidified as we are still launching and kind of planning for this process. So happy to share more at our upcoming update.
Okay. The other thing is, hopefully, we're engaging groups like Cradle to Career that have worked with joint forces around Evanston zoning issues. These are largely, if not entirely grassroots organizations that are comprised of Evanston residents. And I think their input is incredibly valuable. So we should continue to partner with them. The consultants should partner with them. One way I think we can do that is we need to make sure that we get the language and tone of our messaging right. Everyone doesn't respond to the same things or use the same language to describe different scenarios or activities or et cetera. So I think we need to figure out how to message and market to different, unique communities and diverse communities, which we have in Evanston. And I think groups like Cradle to Career and others can help with that. So I don't want to, I wouldn't like to see us just hand this off completely to consultants. I'd like to make sure that our grassroots leadership in Evanston can have a role, including in developing the messaging. And yeah, that's worth getting our accent to. So if you want to respond to that, yeah.
Happy to. We did have representatives at the launch event. They're extremely enthusiastic about this process and want to learn more about how they can help support it. So we will absolutely be working with them and other community leaders to, again, ensure that we're reaching a broad network as we go through this process. So it's on our radar and definitely being incorporated into the process.
Okay, and I can't remember my last pointed question. So I'll hold there, Mayor Bis, and I'll take the rest offline. But thank you.
Thanks very much. And I apologize for missing your hand. And you can always, if I'm missing your hand, you can always text me as well, just to make sure that you got your chance to speak, Councilmember. This brings us now to item SP three. Would someone care to make a motion relative to item SP three?
I'd like to move Resolution 17-R-24, authorizing the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Village of Wilmatt regarding Ryan Field.
Councilmember Revell moves passage of Resolution 17-R-24. Councilmember Nguyen seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Nusma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is one minor amendment that is, has been suggested by staff. So I have sent an email to council. So I will make that motion now to add concert takedown to the third paragraph, second bullet point. And what we're talking about is the concert operations plan and traffic from the demolition of Ryan Field, construction of the Ryan Field complex, concert setup and takedown be restricted from going in or through Wilmatt. So just clarifying for the benefit of all concerned that concert setup includes the takedown.
Yeah, a second.
Councilmember Nusma moves to add the words "and" to take down to the spot just described. Councilmember Revell seconds. Is there any discussion on this amendment? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the roll on the amendment?
Councilmember Saffredin?
Aye.
Councilmember Revell?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
With six voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the amendment is adopted. Councilmember Nusma, if you carry, still have the floor? Is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the roll on Resolution 17-R-24? As just a minute.
I sent you a text.
Oh, sorry, Councilmember Saffredin.
Sure, I just, real quick, these are probably questions for Rook. You and I discussed this. There are no costs to the City of Evanston related to this, correct?
Good evening, Councilmember Saffredin. There are no direct costs to the City of Evanston, correct?
Okay. And all of the traffic management, planning, staff is yet to be returned between the City of Evanston and Northwestern. This just relates to how it affects the Village of Wilmatt?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Saffredin?
Aye.
Councilmember Revell?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
With six voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the resolution as amended is adopted. This brings us now to the consent agenda for the evening. I've been, I learned that item P three did not make it out of planning and development, so will be removed from the consent agenda. Are there any other items that folks would like to see removed from the consent agenda?
Item, I sent in amendment to the minutes, M1. I'd also like to see P2, P1, and A12 removed.
So M1, A12, P1, and P2, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm going to pull A5 as well.
A5?
A2 and A7, please.
A2 and A7. So at this time, we have M1, A2, A5, A7, A12, P1, P2, and P3. Anything else? Seeing nothing else, I would take, I would entertain a motion.
I move the consent agenda. Absent M1, A2, A5, A7, A12, P1, P2, and P3.
Second.
Councilmember Nguyen moves the consent agenda with the exception of items M1, A2, A5, A7, A12, P1, P2, and P3. Councilmember Nusma seconds. Seeing no discussion, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Saffredin?
Aye.
Councilmember Revell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadakatis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the consent agenda, except for the eight items previously read as adopted. This brings us to item M1. Would someone care to make a motion relative to item M1?
Mr. Mayor, I move adoption of the City Council minutes from January 22, 2024.
A second.
Councilmember Nusma moves adoption of the January 22, 2024 City Council minutes. Councilmember Kelly seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Kelly?
So I submitted amended language to the minutes. I think you all should have received those. Let's say, I'm amending the minutes, the section in our packet in reference to N dash R dash 24, that state staff recommended the city council approve resolution NR 25, authorizing the city manager to execute a contract for lease at 909 Davis Street for office space to house city hall functions. And I have the verbatim wording from the minutes. We authorized him to negotiate a contract. That's what we voted on for lease at 909 Davis Street for office space to house the hall functions that could, and to try to obtain, I put, that could involve a shorter lease and the option for first refusal to purchase the building.
The motion fails for lack of a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Severdon?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Hidakatis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Winn?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
With six voting in favor and one voting against, the motion carries and the minutes are adopted. This brings us now to item A two. Councilmember Nusma, would you care to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of item A two, which is the BMO Harris Amazon credit card activity in the amount of $16,443.97.
Councilmember Nusma moves approval of the BMO Harris Amazon credit card activity. Councilmember Winn, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Severdon?
I abstain.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Hidakatis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Winn?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
With six voting in favor, none voting against, and one abstention, the motion carries and the activity is approved. This brings us to item A five. Councilmember Nusma, would you care to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, it would be my pleasure to move item A five, which is approval of a contract with Verde Solutions LLC for a solar power purchase agreement at Robert Crown Community Center, which is RFP 23 dash 38.
Second.
Councilmember Nusma moves approval of the aforementioned contract. Councilmember Winn, seconds. Councilmember Nusma?
Thank you, Mayor Bis. I remove this from consent, not to question anything, but just to allow us the opportunity to celebrate a milestone here. The Robert Crown facility was designed and constructed to be solar ready. And by approving this contract tonight, we are taking the action, which will lead to solar panels being installed on the roof of Robert Crown later this year. This is a project that were we paying for it ourselves would cost in the range of a million and a half to $2 million. We are getting that value at no capital expense to the city by engaging in this power purchase agreement. What this means is that a third party, the one that we're contracting with, will install the system on their dime. They will own it, they will operate it, they will maintain it, very importantly. It's on them to maintain this, this solar array for the life of the contract, which is 20 years. And what we get out of this, in addition to, you know, a lot of good publicity, I hope, for taking this step towards our CARP commitments, is cheaper electricity. They will sell us the electricity that this solar array generates for a price that is, at the moment, 25% less than we are currently paying. And we are locked in at this low price for the next 20 years. And I think I can fairly guarantee that the market price for electricity that we would otherwise be paying is going to go up in future years. I won't say exactly how much, but somewhere between more than just a little and quite a lot. So this represents, you know, long-term operational savings for the city. And I think is the best way to get solar on, on Robert Crown. I said I wasn't going to question this particular application, but I do have a question for staff is, where do we do this next? And Kara, as long as you're coming up here, maybe we, you can share a picture of what this is going to look like so we can start to wrap our eyes and our minds around it.
Sure. Good evening, I'm Kara Pratt, City Sustainability and Resilience Manager. And Allison is now pulling up an image that was shared in the RFP response, which gives an idea of what this solar installation might look like at our Robert Crown Community Center. In terms of the future plans moving forward for solar at city facilities, we have an animal shelter that is planning to be completed in construction in late summer. There's a really great video update with Shane Carey and the engineering team that's up on our website that gives some details and updates on that process. So animal shelter first in terms of solar. As you all heard a couple of weeks ago, we also plan to install solar at the service center over the next couple of years. And generally, our best practice moving forward with facilities and engineering is that as long as there's a new and adequate city roof, we will plan to put solar on that space.
Great. And then one further question for, I guess I'll start with City Manager Stowe is, who is going to be responsible internally for managing this construction project? And then once it's up and running, even though it's not our responsibility to maintain, someone at the city is going to have to be the interface and kind of keeping an eye on things.
Yes, I think Councilmember Nusma for the question. It's going to be a collaborative effort between engineering, sustainability, and facilities. Ultimately, I consider it a facility asset, so I think facilities will take the lead, but it'll be with support from other staff.
Okay, great. That's all I have, thank you. And thank you, staff.
Seeing no further discussion, would the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Severdon?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Hidakatis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Winn?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
And Councilmember Burns?
With seven voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the contract is approved. This brings us to item A seven. Councilmember Nusma?
Mr. Mayor, I move item A seven, which is approval of a single source contract to replace two heat wheels at Robert Crown. This is in the amount of $33,720.
Councilmember Nusma moves approval of a single source contract replaced two heat wheels at Robert Crown facility. Councilmember Winn, seconds. Councilmember Severdon?
Yeah, I think this question's been asked in emails of various forms. Well, I want to just ask staff in the meeting, how do we determine funding sources? And why is this not being funded by the Crown Maintenance Fund?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Sean Cholick, Facilities and Fleet Management. So I've discussed the, the Robert Crown Maintenance Fund a little further with Parks and Rec Director Audrey Thompson. That fund was basically set up in order to put some money aside and save that for larger improvement projects for the Robert Crown Center. It's not, it wasn't intended to be, you know, for smaller components or regular ongoing maintenance. It would, it was more intended to be for things like large roofing projects, turf replacement projects, things like that. So therefore, we've, we're, we're planning on paying for it from the Facilities Maintenance Fund.
Thanks. Sean, I don't want to put you on the spot, so if you don't know the answer to this, feel free to just say you don't know the answer to this, but is that a determination that's made by the Director of Parks and Recreation? Like, who decides what qualifies for being funded out of the Crown Maintenance Fund? Is that city manager? Is that you? Is that Director of Parks? Like, how does that work?
So I don't, I don't know if one particular person decides that. I think, you know, talking a little more with, with the other staff, I think that, you know, that's just the understanding we have about the Robert Crown Maintenance Fund and how it was set up. So we just kind of made, made a decision the best we can based upon that. Audrey Thompson is here, so I'll let her also chime in.
Thank you, Audrey Thompson, Director, Parks and Recreation. So there's an MOU for Friends of Robert Crown, and that MOU actually states that prior to there being any use for the maintenance fund, that there would be a conversation between Friends of Robert Crown and the department. And then those should be sent to you all as city council members to approve. So that is how the memorandum of understanding reads between Friends of Robert Crown and how this maintenance fund is supposed to be used.
Right, so we have to ask Friends of Robert Crown?
So it's not, it's not an ask. It is really just a review of what improvement projects. Because my understanding is that based on the initial, I guess, agreement with Friends of Robert Crown and raising the money for the center, that there would be this building maintenance fund, basically because of larger maintenance issues that occurred with the former Robert Crown. The family wanted to ensure that there would always be some funds for larger projects at Robert Crown. And so we budget, and, and our budget for Parks and Rec, $175,000 per year. And that money is supposed to be used over time for larger projects. And so it's a conversation, not necessarily, definitely not permission, because any of those projects would rise to the level of approval for city council.
Okay, so it's not really a maintenance fund as much as a live scale capital improvement and investment fund?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
All right, thank you both. I appreciate your answers.
Councilmember Kelly?
Sorry, just a quick follow up. So, and so we put in, the city puts in $175,000 a year into that fund, which is the Friends of Robert Crown Fund?
So it's not the Friends of Robert Crown, it's a building maintenance fund.
But you said that was created, right, by the Friends of Robert Crown?
So it was created because of conversations from the family that stated, hey, we really want to make sure that if we are investing money and Friends of Robert Crown will raise money, our agreement was to make sure that we are depositing $175,000 per year that would really accumulate so that when we have larger projects, we're able to pay it out of this building maintenance fund. And so that was an agreement. So in our budget, every year, there's $175,000 that is taken out of our budget for this building maintenance fund. So not, not for, so it's not coming from Friends of Robert Crown, it's just an agreement.
What is our balance about in that if we're putting $175 a year now for?
So this memorandum of understanding started in 2021, and so it should be three years of accumulation. Although there have been some projects that have been taken out of that, and so we are working with finance now to, to find out exactly how much is in that fund.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Seeing no further discussion, would the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Severdon?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Hidakatis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Winn?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
With seven voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the contract is approved. This brings us now to item A 12. Councilmember Nusma?
Mr. Mayor, I move item A 12, recommendation by the Parks and Recreation Board to adopt an updated policy regarding launch permits and storage at the Dempster Street Sailing Facility.
Councilmember Nusma moves adoption of the updated policy just mentioned. Councilmember Winn, seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you. So I guess I, I know a lot of the community members have been very involved and put a lot of hours. I'm always about collaborating with our community, and I appreciate the work, Ms. Thompson, that you've done, a lot of really wonderful work on this. I would like to air, you know, they put together a great series of recommendations, the community who's living here, who's on the beach, which I think are great, like an idea of adding more spaces. I don't know if they meant this, but you know, I don't know if they said this, but sliding scales. I know that's something that was mentioned before. Verifying IDs of those actually using the slips, as well as those on the waiting list. Checking to see if people who can double stack. And, and then having a deadline for storage. So if your boat's, if your, whatever it is, isn't your kayak, or whatever it is, isn't in. And to maybe start with those recommendations and see what impact those have, and then see what we need to do in terms of reducing and keeping it to two, like no more than to, like, implement all those before we say you can only have one. I just feel like that would make more sense. We'd be able to then gauge where we're at, at the end of the summer, if we implement those steps first. It seems to me that would be a good way to approach this.
Sure. So, good evening, members of the city council, Manager Stowe, Clerk Mendoza, Tim Carter, Lakefront Manager. We hear you, we hear that group. We're going to be implementing some of those ideas, the IDs, double stacking, encouraging people to, to do what they can to maybe give up their spot to get more room. But we feel this is an equity issue. And at the end of the day, no matter what we choose to do, if we were to go as far as closing Greenwood Street Beach, if we were going to use the gravel parking lots, or reutilize Dempster Street Beach, we would simply never have enough rack storage. So we don't believe in kicking this issue down the road and coming back to you necessarily next year, because it will still be a problem. We hope that this will pass tonight, and then I can call 49 of our members on the long, long waiting list. And I know they're going to be ecstatic, hey, you got a spot this year. So we can, you have our, our word that we're going to continue to work with Payson and the group to find solutions to solve this.
Thank you. So yes, I think absolutely addressing the equity issue. I just think we don't really know how much of an issue we have until we implement some of these measures first. And I also think, in terms of equity, I mean, opening this up and having sliding scale for slip rental, there are going to be plenty of folks who are, you know, couples who are lower income, who both have a kayak, who both have, it doesn't mean, I just think like, and right now, it's just open to as many slips as you got, got, and so that's not right. So we're going from that down to one. I just think that's too drastic when there's so many other measures that can be implemented first, including reducing it to two for the first summer. And I think then we have a better gauge as to what's really needed. And, and including expanding the spaces. I think, what is his name, Payton?
Pacey. Yep.
You know, proposed ways to increase the spacing. So to me, it just seems like that would make more sense to be working with the community in that regard. And then maybe it turns out we still end up in the same place. I don't think we will. I think if we move from, to reducing it to two and implement all these other measures with IDs to verify and everything else, I think we're going to find that the situation is different than what we perceive. And maybe there's, you know.
I understand, yeah. You know, as, as Lisa, who, who spoke during public comment, it, equity takes sacrifice. And change is hard. This is, this is hard. People are not used to that. You know, some of those group members have been going to the beach for 40 plus years. It is a change, but it's time. And it's, it's time to take a step in the right direction. We did that with the free beach passes and, you know, and it's, now we're looking at this through an equity lens at Dempster Street Beach. And I wouldn't, I'm sure we'll be back with more ideas and proposals over the coming years for consideration.
Thank you. I just want to say too, I mean, if someone even is on the waiting list for a long time and they get in, and then they're out the next year, equity, I mean, it's, it's just not serving our residents necessarily that well. No matter whether you're low income, middle income, I mean, or whoever you are waiting, I just, I don't think, you know, for booting everybody out every year, and they've been waiting, waiting, they get in, and now they have to, their spouse can't go too, I don't know. It just sounds like there's probably a way to go about this that responds a little bit more holistically to the community. Thank you.
Just a couple of points, Audrey Thompson, Director, Parks and Recreation. So there were several points that were made during public comment, and I'd like to address those. One was, we really need some opportunity to go down to the beach and measure. Well, there was one person here who has clearly been to the beach and measured just a few days ago. So there is no reason why a person wouldn't understand, prior to the time that we're opening up the slots, it's no reason why they wouldn't know how many of their, their vessels would be able. And frankly, the, the rack storage has not changed. So people know what their space is already and how many, how many vessels they can fit. I think another part is, we're saying there are older adults, there are people who can't reach. There are also people who are in that same situation who are on the waiting list. And so if we keep, if we just say, hey, just one more year, we'll be back the same time this this year, this time next year, with the same issue. So we'd like to start now, so that we can start really working toward the equity issues that we're already trying to strive for, instead of just kind of, again, as Tim said, continue to, you know, push the can down the road. So at this point, you know, we've sent this back to the Parks and Recreation, we could not even get our Parks and Recreation Board to make a motion. They said, we hear everyone, we still believe this is an equity issue, and it stands as we sent it to council the first time. So our recommendation remains the same, one per household.
Councilmember Nusma, followed by Hadda Gaddis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Thompson, you might have spoken to my question already, but I agree that this is change. Change is hard. One thing in my experience that can take some of the sting out of change is to let people know that change is coming, and give them some time to get used to it before it happens. So what if we said, okay, this is going to be a policy, but effective next summer? That gives people time to kind of mentally adjust.
So I think that would be, if we had not already worked with some of our individuals, we meet with Payson's group, we had a huge meeting with Payson's group. There were some recommendations that came out of that meeting that we are, at this point, not willing to entertain. You know, one was, if we close Greenwood Street Beach, then we would be able to make up a lot of space. That is not where we are as a department at this time. And so we, we believe that continuing to, and I'll just be honest, if we are, if we're saying time, I'm not, I'm not sure that this will be palatable even next year, because the same issues that everyone came to the podium to describe will remain next year. And we are trying to take people off of the waiting list that have the same concerns, they've been on the waiting list six or eight years, you heard Lisa, I mean, they're mothers, they're older adults, they have the same issues as the individuals that came. We believe that this, it's time, and we'd like to move forward with the one per household.
Thank you. Councilmember Hadda Gaddis.
I just asked staff if we can, if there's any options going forward that require money or equipment to be budgeted for next year. I think that would be something I think would also ease the sting of this. I know we talked about some other, in the last meeting, some other options for expansion of the storage. Can you just speak to possible, because I know there was some things laid out that obviously closing one beach, that's not off the table, but are there some other, like, different rack configurations that, or other options explored?
So myself and Michael Callahan have been at the beach several times, and we've been talking to Payson and his groups. There are, there is one way we can probably reconfigure, reconfigure the back part of it and add two kayak racks. However, that would only yield about 12 spots. We are getting quotes right now for those racks, and looking into it, we are reaching out to Evanston Businesses to see if they're able to build us those racks. They're expensive. The six racks that we got quoted from one company that we've used in the past was about $7,000. So it does, it does take time and money, and I'll certainly work with Michael Callahan and Director Thompson to identify funding for future projects and capital improvement projects.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
At this time, no one is requesting to speak for a first time, so we go back to second cracks. Councilmember Kelly has two and a quarter minutes left.
Thank you. So I do agree with you, Councilmember Nusma, I do think that time does help in terms of educating and letting people know. I think frequently in this city, we've been passing sometimes measures with little notice, and it's caused a lot of stress and unnecessary, unnecessary, like plastic bags, which I'm entirely in favor of, but with very short window. So I agree, I think it would be helpful to, given that we're right at, we just started with summer registration, and now we're about to change this suddenly, I do think it would be helpful. I don't know, Councilmember Nusma, do you, are you interested in, would you be interested in seconding the motion to have this go into effect in '25?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Kelly. It's something I was thinking about, but I am taking what our staff is telling us, and what I'm hearing is that you've had these conversations, there has been time, and delaying this a year would just be postponing it, not allowing, without changing people's minds necessarily. So no is the answer to your question.
Seeing no further discussion, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Sufferton?
No.
Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadda Gaddis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
With five voting in favor and two voting against, the motion carries and the recommendation, the updated policy is adopted. This brings us now to item P-1. Councilmember Revelle, would you care to make a motion?
Okay, I move ordinance 19-0-24, approving a text amendment, amending regulations for efficiency homes. And we will be voting on the substitute amendment that we approved in committee.
Perhaps we could move P-1 and P-2 simultaneously?
I could. And then I also move adoption of ordinance 18-0-24, approving a special use with zoning relief for an efficiency home development at 1915-1917 Grand Street in the R-3, two-family residential district.
Second.
Councilmember Revelle moves passage for introduction of ordinances 19-0-24 and 18-0-24, with the reminder that ordinance 19-0-24 was amended in planning and development. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you. So yeah, I would like us to consider each one separately. The first one, I think, was the more important one, where the Land Use Commission unanimously voted that this should be considered as a planned development. And I, and again, I'm going to express my own interest in pocket communities or pocket neighborhoods. I've read Ross Chapin, I've looked at these, I think it's something that we should absolutely be looking at. In fact, I think we might want to consider an ordinance around these. We need to do this right, and doing it roughshod like this, as a, this isn't justice, we're changing our zoning for our one, our two, our three, our four, for this one gentleman's proposal, for this one sort of, I mean, really, it is like a subdivision, and we're just going to subject it only to, as a special use. So it's really important that it's, you know, we have a mechanism in place to ensure that something goes forward with the proper scrutiny, and we're not doing it. We're just, we have a robust system of planning and development, and again, five-zero, why we wouldn't, you know, I'm just kind of stunned, because I think it will still go through, but I believe that the Land Use Commission had a lot of questions and concerns, I do too, about this one, but I think ultimately it'll get approved. But if the Land Use Commission is able to have this brought back to it as a plan, as a PD, we'll be able to also ask questions, send back, make, get it right. This is our first one, let's do this right. So what is in our packet tonight, prior to the Jonathan Nusma's amendment, is to go ahead and make a text amendment allowing more than one efficiency home, subject to a PD review. And that's what I would like to see, and I don't know what would stop anybody from wanting to do that. A little more time to get this right for the neighbors that have poured out in mass to say no, like, why wouldn't you want to at least do them that much of a favor to allow our experts on the Land Use Commission the opportunity to make some tweaks and amends to get this right? But to not even do that? And they even said, I think they support also the concept of a pocket community. So just, you know, prescinding that whole process, to me, is shameful. I'm sorry, but I just, I'm shocked that we wouldn't, you know, adhere to their recommendation to bring this back as a PD. So, thank you. And I just want to add one more thing, I mean, we're right on the cusp, too, of this whole new, you know, comprehensive plan. I mean, this should be worked in also. And again, you know, let's talk about, let's talk about an ordinance round pocket, a pocket community, and do it right, make it beautiful. Instead, this is really about risk management. We're going to pass this without all, any of the scrutinies that are, that are not, it's very robust. If you compare an application for planned development compared to an application for a special use, it's about three times as long a planned development. And to just simply jump over that, because we want to get this one project through, we're going to change the zoning and allow this, you know, I can put up some little houses in my backyard now, I just need a special use all over, and just like, I'm sorry, but kind of trash the town with this? I mean, come on, folks, let the Land Use Commission do due diligence. You all should want to do due diligence on this. I'm sorry, but you're not, you're not allowing them to really review this properly. This will go through. And again, I said, I'm favorable to pocket communities. I think it's a wonderful concept. I think it's, you know, I love the idea of these, you know, shared stewardship land, but this is not the way to proceed with this at all. And that's all, thank you.
Councilmember Nusma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a question for staff, perhaps Director Flax. With the changes we have made by approving, or should we approve P-1, will the next pocket neighborhood, you know, sail through without any consideration whatsoever?
Good evening, Council. Megan Jones, Neighborhood Land Use Planner. In a word, no.
Okay, thank you. Is this, it would be a special use?
It would be a special use.
Special, what happens with a special use?
So on the back end, before we get to the public hearing aspect, it would still be routed to staff, everyone gets to provide their comments. There would typically still be some back and forth, some revisions of plans, and then we actually get to the public hearing aspect. More than likely, there will be a community meeting, well, that is at the discretion of councilmembers. We will provide the notice for special uses, it's a 500-foot radius. It would then go to Land Use Commission, they would review, take public comments, do their deliberations, and go through the standards for the special uses. At that point, they can approve the project as it is, they can deny the project, or they can approve it with various conditions, as is typically the case with pretty much all of our special uses. Then it comes before the Planning and Development Committee and City Council for their review, where you have the same options to approve it as it is, deny it.
Right, so not counting the back and forth with staff, and not counting a community meeting, which may not happen, that's the council member's prerogative. There are three formal steps in the process. One is land use, which would meet and consider the standards, and then it comes to P and D, and then it comes to council. So I'm satisfied with that process, that by approving P-1 as amended, we are not throwing open our community to willy-nilly reckless development, because we still have a process. We still have the opportunity to consider proposals and provide informed professional feedback, and very importantly, to get public feedback as well. So I'm comfortable with that change to P-1, and when it comes to P-2, I want to, I want to, I'm supportive not only of this, of this proposal, but I want to also support, offer some words of encouragement to Councilmember Revelle, who I think was very unfairly accused by some of her constituents of not listening. And I want to make it very clear that there is a difference between not being heard and not getting your way. And that's a task that all of us on this council are confronted with on a regular basis, is hearing from constituents who have varying issues, or various perspectives on any given issue. And some people are for things, some people are for, are against things. We talk to all those people, at least I do, I know Councilmember Revelle does. I know she's taken this very seriously, because we've talked about this in the past, and, you know, she doesn't take this decision lightly. And I give Councilmember Revelle a lot of credit for having the courage to take the long view, do what's right in the best interests of all of Evanston, current and future residents, with respect to the council goals that we have all agreed on as a collective, with housing and sustainability, environmental sustainability. And thank you, Councilmember Revelle, for your vote on this particular issue. That's all I have, thanks.
At this time, no one is requesting to speak for the first time, so we go back to Councilmember Kelly with a minute and a quarter left.
Thank you. So one point of clarification, well, I mean, I think staff will admit, the overview, the oversight with a PD is far more, there's far more oversight with a PD than there is with a, than with a special use review. I mean, like the landscaping, the tree count, if you're talking about environment, there's far more that goes into oversight for a PD than for a special use. So I don't know why you're all not wanting to hold a higher bar on this. It's going to go through. Like, why you wouldn't want to give that to your residences, beyond me. The 500 feet, can you clarify, I mean, there's public benefits too, we get to ask for public benefits, that's, you know, an integral part of a PD. Maybe we decide, yeah, you got to pave that alley, you're going to put 15 cars on there, we need that alley paved. There's a lot of things, or maybe we decide not to, but that is, that is a component of a PD, which is not a component of a special use. The 500 feet, does that mean that if there's a petition, it would trigger a supermajority vote? When you said first, or no, when you say it has all the addresses and notifying, is there, I mean, for, or is that just for PD only?
So for the, for the special uses, there is a requirement to mail within a 500-foot radius. For planned developments, that is doubled to 1,000 feet.
Okay.
A petition will not necessarily trigger a supermajority vote in those cases, and I know that is specifically for text amendments, but it is, submitting a petition is still a way for the residents to show that they are all opposed or all supportive of a particular project.
Okay, and this being a text amendment, that would trigger a supermajority, if they had submitted a petition? I don't know if they did or not. Was there, was a petition submitted with a 500? I mean, did anybody wa, I feel like these residents just didn't get why, you could explain.
I just want to be clear, Councilmember Kelly has the floor here.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. No, I'm curious about the process, I care about community and community process. So I guess I, right, that's unfortunate, I think that should be improved. So in terms of a text amendment and a petition for a two-thirds vote?
So I do want to clarify, the, if a petition is submitted for a MAP amendment, then that is where the supermajority vote gets triggered.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Sufferton?
No.
Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Hadda Gaddis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Nope.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
With five voting in favor and two voting against, the motion carries and both ordinances are introduced. Each will be on the February 26th City Council Agenda for Action. Councilmember Nusma is recognized to make a motion.
How many do you call the wards?
Oh, no he's not. That's not true at all. We now move on with call of the wards, beginning with Councilmember Sufferton.
Report.
Councilmember Revelle?
No report.
Councilmember Hadda Gaddis?
No report.
Councilmember Kelly?
No report.
Councilmember Nguyen?
No report.
Councilmember Nusma?
I will have a report. So attention, all Fourth Ward residents who have not yet responded to the Fourth Ward online survey, and there are quite a few of you. This is a request for staff to, or for the local press who's in attendance to help spread the word. who's in attendance to help spread the word. Please enter your responses now to the Fourth Ward online survey. You can look to last month's, or, I'm sorry, last week's Ward Meeting Packet for a link to that survey that's on, accessible through my council webpage. Also, the two previous Ward email newsletters have the link to that survey. So, that's all I have.
Councilmember Burns?
Yeah, just want some clarification from legal about just what the rules are to reconsider in ordinance. I want to, I want to make a motion here, but I want to make sure it's in order. And this is, I'd like to make a motion regarding the 909 Davis lease, but I want to understand what our rules say about revisiting such a resolution. I think I said ordinance, but it's truly a resolution.
Thank you, Councilmember Burns. Alex Rugge, interim corporation counsel. Let me just double-check the rules, but I believe a motion to reconsider can only be made at the meeting in which it was passed.
Well, additionally, I can just personally share the information that as is typical, in fact, I think literally universal throughout my entire term as mayor, and I would presume for my predecessors, I signed that resolution long ago. I almost always sign resolutions within a day or two of passage. And so, I would imagine that adds a pretty significant procedural hurdle to any reconsideration.
Yeah, and I just, I guess what I'm trying to understand is, so we vote on something, and then we're just locked into it no matter what? Like, that just doesn't sound right for, I guess, the, what would the, so the action would probably be just to suspend the rules? That would be the action that we could take?
No, I don't think I can un-sign a resolution. The action would be to pass another resolution superseding it.
Do you want to make a comment?
And I, and I, yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Kelly. And I'll-
I just want to say, I don't know if you want to reconsider. This evening, I did try to at least amend the minutes to reflect more appropriately what we actually voted on. And that would at least give it a little more room for variation. Also, that was one of the first things that Mayor Bis did, was to change our reconsideration policy, where you could bring it back the next time, but he made it so it had to happen in the same night, which is almost impossible. But that's why I want to, since I think you probably voted against my motion to amend the minutes, I don't know if you want to reconsider that.
No, because to me, it's not, this isn't about the minutes. I was, I, you know, I hope that, the reason why I voted on the 15-year lease last meeting, or whenever we voted on it, was because I felt very strongly at the time that I could work with our economic development manager and the negotiators to at least get them to request what a 10-year lease could, would look like. I think that request was made, and because we, in a sense, gave away all of our leverage by saying way too much during the last meeting, and the property owner was on the call, they, in my understanding, refused to even, or I don't want to use that language, but we were not able to get what a 10-year lease would look like in writing. I don't support a 15-year lease. I want to, it's important for me to put that on the record. I don't support it without knowing what a 10-year option would look like. And, and again, I thought it was, would be easy enough to at least get what that would look like on paper, so that, you know, staff could at least consider it. And we do not have that at this time. I don't think, and, you know, we already know that the market is, is not great for office space. And the idea that that'll improve over the next, you know, 15 years is unlikely. Maybe we can lease it out for some other use. It will unlikely be us doing it. We'll probably hire somebody to do it, so maybe that helps. But I just, I don't, I don't think it, we made the right decision to remove our staff's ability to even consider a 10-year lease. And so, I want to know, is it suspending the rules? Is it making a motion for another resolution? What I can do to, you know, to allow them that ability?
So, Councilmember Burns, answer your question. A motion to reconsider, I did confirm, can only be made at the same meeting in which said vote was taken. So, a motion to reconsider is inappropriate at this time. The mayor is correct. If council members wanted to undo a resolution, they would have to bring forth a resolution superseding the resolution that was passed.
Couldn't we suspend the rules to vote to reconsider? Couldn't we do that? We could suspend the rules, right, to vote to reconsider?
Technically could suspend the rules.
And it is true, I mean, this is, the office market-
So, Councilmember Kelly, you are not recognized. The reason-
And that, but that is, that was my question earlier.
Yeah, so just-
Can we just suspend the rules?
I want to be, I mean, the reason that I advocated for the rule change that was previously mentioned is exactly because of the situation we're in now, where the notion that you could, you could make a motion to reconsider after the thing was signed is itself oxymoronic. And so, I think in the old rules, where you could have made a motion to reconsider, it's not clear what it would have meant, because you can't un-sign a resolution. That act is binding. So, it is totally in order. For example, right now, during Call of the Wards, the rules explicitly provide for making a motion to create a special order of business at the next city council meeting. So, that's in order. You can do some, work with staff behind the scenes to do something else. But I think a situation where you pass something, and then it's signed and enacted, and then unpassed later, is totally incoherent. You can't run a government that way.
Yeah, so I guess then my motion would be, and again, I don't necessarily expect it to pass, but I just, it's important for me to get this on record. Again, I just do not think 15 years, without knowing what a 10-year option is, it does not make sense to sign a 15-year lease. And I just want to make that clear. I'm not saying I'm not for a 15-year, but the fact that because we said way too much in an open meeting, we're now not even being allowed to see a 10-year option, I think does not make good sense to the city. And so, I will make a motion to place as a special order of business on the next meeting, a resolution, a new resolution, or a resolution to amend the previous resolution, whatever is appropriate, Council Rugge, that would allow our staff to negotiate, potentially a 15-year lease, but also a 10-year lease with the owners of 909 Davis.
Second.
Councilmember Burns moves to create a special order of business on the February 26th City Council Agenda to direct staff to negotiate a 10- or 15-year lease for the property at 909 Davis. Councilmember Kelly, seconds. Will the clerk please take the roll on that motion?
Councilmember Saffredin?
Aye.
Councilmember Revelle?
No.
Councilmember Hidakaris?
No.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen? Councilmember Newsma?
No.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
With three voting in favor and four voting against, the motion fails. Councilmember Burns, do you have more call of the words?
Uh, no, thank you.
Thank you. That concludes Call of the Wards for the evening. Councilmember? Councilmember Kelly?
Yeah, I do want to state also, I mean, there is one of the target properties. It is available for a short-term lease. And if we're being honest with the residents in our community, that this is about either contemplating rehabbing this building, upgrading it, or building a new building, we don't need a long-term lease, and one is available. We do have the short-term lease possibility, and we should be negotiating with that. That's also a point of, you know, leverage, if you may. But we certainly should be discussing that and looking into that. The market has never been worse, it's never been softer in decades, for commercial office space. This is, we have this opportunity. It hasn't been worse. I mean, we can get a short-term lease if we need it. For us to enter into this pricey 10, or even 15, I mean, I think it should be a short-term lease. We don't need a long-term lease. It's going to cost taxpayers tens of millions of dollars more than it would if we entered into a short-term lease. This was ramrodded through with a special order of business. And no, it's not oxymoronic to bring it back for reconsideration, as it has been the tradition, because frequently, things come up at council, and then council members hear back, because residents hear about it in the news. They hear back, they get more information, and they bring it back for reconsideration if they were on the prevailing side. It's a very democratic process that involves, that gives your community a chance to weigh in, and the council member a chance to reflect on a vote that was taken that maybe they'd like to reconsider. So, absolutely, we should not be moving forward with a long-term lease. This would be squandering tens of millions of dollars unnecessarily. And so, I'm sorry that we're not going to, I appreciate Councilmember Burns' attempt to at least reduce it, but it, we don't need a long-term lease, period. And there's a short-term lease available out there. If we don't explore it, shame on us. Thank you.
Councilmember Newsma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to convene into executive session pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, 120/2C, to discuss agenda items regarding litigation. This agenda item is permitted to be considered in executive session as enumerated under the Open Meetings Act